Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call to order the Washoe County Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 5th. If we could call it a determinative quorum, please.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Michael Flick.
Present.
Daniel Lazaruski.
Here.
Kate Nelson is absent. Pat Phillips.
Here.
Rob Pierce.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Flick, if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Large, if you could give us the ethics law announcement, please.
Commissioners are reminded that if respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you've received a gift or a loan, you have a pecuniary interest, you have a commitment in a private capacity, such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, you provide a representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered, you must disclose the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered, and you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it has cleared the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the planning commission rules, if you had any contact outside this meeting with a person interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Large. Mr. Pelham, if you could read the appeals procedure, please.
Certainly. Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you qualify as an aggrieved party of your person, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pelham. Ladies and gentlemen, is there any public comment either in chambers or via Zoom at
We have Gary Schmidt. Gary, go ahead and state your first and last name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Gary Schmidt. I'm a 50-year resident of northern Nevada, spent most of it in Washoe County. I'm going to be speaking a little bit later on on Agenda Item 9. I own property in Gerlach. I'm formerly a resident of Gerlach. I run for office in Gerlach. I wanted to give you during this public comment period a little bit of my background. I graduated from San Jose State University with a degree in economics, minors in real estate and computer sciences in 1966. I own properties in four states, California, Nevada, Texas, and Alabama, both commercial, residential, and agricultural. I have agriculture in three states, Texas, Nevada, and California. I own a mobile home park. I own a recreational vehicle park. I own various residential units in all those states, including duplexes and private houses. I've been in retail. I've been in food processing. I have a...I'm the former, still the current owner of the Ranger Lodge on Mount Rose Highway. I've been in motel business. I still own that property. The business is not open on a daily basis at the moment, and the property is for sale. I'm going to address you about Gerlach. I've had property there for a quarter of a century. I'm familiar with Gerlach for half a century, and I'm going to oppose the zoning changes up there. I stand in unison with what I believe 95% of the residents of Gerlach in regards to housing issues, not necessarily shortages, but issues. And the problem with this zoning change is the current zoning on the 18 acres allows for 54 new units. There's only about a little over 100 units in Gerlach right now. The current zoning on that property allows for a 50% density increase within what I'm going to call the city limits, it's not a city, but the GID district. If the zoning change goes through, it will effectively allow for 300 additional units. It will more than, or almost triple the capacity of the town. There is no water. You don't have a water report with this application. There is not sufficient water to come anywhere near supporting this increase in density. So I support the concept that we're trying to do up there, but this is not the way to do it. It's bad planning, and it's only going to lead to litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Any further comment either in chambers or via Zoom?
No further public comment in chambers, no public comment on Zoom.
Hearing that, I will close public comment, and I'm going to open up the approval for the July 5th agenda, but I must make note that we're going to be moving Item 9A right up under the agenda as it has been requested a continuance. So we will go from approval of the agenda minus Item 9A, and then we will bring it up to right after this agenda approval for public comment on that item. Do I have a motion?
This is Rob Solmood.
Second, Lazaruski.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next on the item...
I abstain.
Oh, you abstained? Okay, thank you. I'm one of stations. Motion carries. So next on the item, agenda would be Item 9A, which we have moved up to open for public comment because this item has been removed from tonight's commission on request of the So do we have further public, do we have public comment either Zoom or in chambers on former Item 9A?
Please, please just go ahead, restate your first and last name for the record. Thank you.
For the record, Gary Schmidt, just want to add to my previous comments. I spent the last three months down on the Gulf Coast of Alabama where I have some of the properties I just described, and so I missed all the meetings in Gerlach, but I did stay in touch with people I know up there, and I firmly believe that the members of the GID, which I believe are all good, honorable persons that have Gerlach's best interests in mind, as I do. But I did stay in touch with them, and I think they are not quite sure what they did by putting this application in. At least two of the board members did not know it was scheduled for approval tonight. They might have got notices, maybe they missed the notices, but they did not know that. So I spent the weekend on the phone, and apparently it did some good. I certainly support the withdrawn or the continuance of that so that there can be another meeting in Gerlach, which I will attend. And again, I support the concept that we're trying to do up there. Some increase in density in small areas where you can put a fourplex or maybe a sixplex is desirable or certainly acceptable, but 12 acres, moving 12 acres to high-density suburban, which would allow an 84-unit condominium project, which don't have to be sold, they could be maintained in ownership by the developer, and it could function like an apartment complex or a company housing. There's a lot of risk increasing that density, but hopefully we can get this all settled out up in Gerlach, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Any further public comment at this time, either via Zoom or in chambers?
No further public comment in chambers, no further, no public comment on Zoom.
Julie?
Julie Olander, for the record. I just would ask you to make this to a date, certain date, and August 1st is your next meeting, and I would just ask, request that you make a date certain.
On the request, the commission meeting is requested, it did not, it says August 2nd?
It should be August 1st, I believe.
It's August 1st.
I could have the applicant come up and correct that.
You're correct. The first Tuesday in August would be August 1st.
Right.
So if we want to get, Mr. Pelham, can we make this date specific?
Yes.
Then we will make a date specific for August 1st.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there any further comment either in chambers or via Zoom for this item?
No further public comment either at Zoom or at chambers.
All right. Thank you. Then we will close this item and move on to Item 7, which is the approval of the June 6, 2023 draft minutes.
Commissioner Lazaruski, I move to approve the draft minutes as written.
This is Rob. I'll second it.
Thank you, commissioners. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving right along to Item 8A, a resolution of appreciation for possible action, possible action to approve a resolution of appreciation of service for Sarah Tavilcheck and to authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission. Resolution in appreciation of service on the Washoe County Planning Commission, Sarah Tavilcheck, from 2013 through 2023. Whereas Sarah Tavilcheck has since her appointment to the planning commission on October 22, 2013, as a representative from District 5, been an active enthusiastic member of the commission, serving the county and its citizens with dedication and distinction. Whereas Sarah provided exemplary leadership to the planning commission by serving as chair for two years, whereas Sarah always treated all her fellow commissioners and staff with the utmost respect, whereas Sarah demonstrated consistent dedication to her community through careful and detailed evaluation of each case that came before her, whereas Sarah displayed an ability to balance her care and devotion to the county citizens while demonstrating a strong understanding that her decisions needed to be code-based. She didn't shy away from a tough question. Also, Sarah ran a great meeting. I was always relieved to have her as chair when some of the more challenging cases were at the podium. She was firm, balanced, and fair. Whereas Sarah volunteered her time and talent to serve two terms on the regional planning commission from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2023. Whereas Sarah had an impeccable attendance record for all of the above meetings. Whereas as a member of the planning commission, Sarah has helped to implement the Washoe County Master Plan and Development Code in a fair and impartial manner, allowing all residents and property owners the opportunity to appropriately develop their property while safeguarding the public interest. Whereas as a member of the regional planning commission, Sarah helped to promote Washoe County interests in the adoption of the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the Washoe County Planning Commission does hereby commend Sarah Tavilcheck for her extraordinary concern and devotion to the citizens of Washoe County through her service on the Washoe County Planning Commission, the Regional Planning Commission, and other commission appointments boards, and be it therefore resolved that the Washoe County Planning Commission will solely miss the unique contributions of Sarah Tavilcheck and extends to Sarah its best wishes for a happy and prospective future. Adopted the sixth day of June 2023, as signed by Washoe County Planning Chair Francine Doncic, attested by Secretary Lloyd Trevor Lloyd.
Thank you, my fellow commissioners. I'm deeply honored to have served the residents of District 5 as a planning commissioner. I took my responsibility very seriously, and I implore of each of you to continue to do the same. This job is critically important for the protection of this region. Few understand the importance of the role of a planning commissioner. We are often the voice of reason in this planning space because few know the code as well as we do, and even though we have sometimes had our decisions overturned, I've been proud of every decision this body has made. I'm grateful to have served. You will now see me very often on this side of the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are we going to try to take a picture? Some kind of a picture with all of us?
Yeah. Do you like to bring residents on the floor?
Yes. Before we move on, I just want to say thank you myself to Sarah because over these years she has helped me grow. We started together in the North Valley Citizen Advisory Board, and it just grew. I wanted her understanding, knowledge, and expertise and attention to detail have been a great growth factor for this commission as a whole, and I just have to say thank
Chair, I have a public comment for Trevor Lloyd on Zoom.
Oh, yes, please. Trevor?
Trevor, please state your first and last name for the record.
Yes, hi, this is Trevor Lloyd, Washoe County Planning Manager. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I did just want to share with you, Sarah, what a pleasure it's been working with you over the years. I think we met long ago when you were on the North Valleys cab, and you just exhibited the highest excellence that we can expect from a public servant. Your knowledge of planning in Washoe County as well as in the region is really extensive. You always came very well prepared to the meetings, and you were certainly an outstanding representative of Washoe County as you served on the regional planning commission, and you know, your experience and your commitment to Washoe County is really going to be missed, and it's just, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Trevor. Anybody, anyone else?
Were you allowed to make? Sir, I just want to say thank you for all your time. You are, you're an amazing person, and I've learned a lot from you, and it is an honor and a privilege to serve with you, so thank you.
Sarah, when I came on here and watched you and what all you knew, what all you did, and I'm going, oh my goodness, what am I into? And I'm so impressed, and I know that we will all miss you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will close Item 8A, and Mr. Pelham, if you could read 8B, please.
Pardon me. Item 8B is discussion of Envision Washoe 2040 for Possible Action to Provide Direction to Staff Relating to the Planning Commission's Involvement in General Public Engagement During This Summer 2023. We have Eric Young, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Chair Doncic and Commission. I'm Eric Young, Senior Planner from the Washoe County Planning Program. As you know muttly, we, for some time now, we've been providing you with at least a memo for an update of what's going on with the Envision Washoe 2040 project, the update of the master plan, and from time to time, we've come to you with a more full-blown presentation like we did last month. What we'd like to get settled tonight is the last bit of your participation leading up to first public hearing in the middle of October. We are right now working on filling out our public engagement calendar for between now and that anticipated public hearing date. We have some dates on the calendar already, and we're working on some more. I think we should have a pretty solid calendar by the end of tomorrow, perhaps. Kat, my fellow teammate on this project, has managed to get several things on the calendar just this week, so that's going really well. But what we wanted to check with you is how would you like to participate? What would you like your engagement to be? We do the memos, and we can come and give you more, and we've provided you with some of those ideas here, but we want to make sure that whatever we do between now and our first public hearing was done with your participation and understanding that that's what we were planning on doing. So the first thing that we'd like to throw out there is this middle of October, that is not your regularly scheduled planning commission date. So unless we hear from you that you just really would not like to do that, we'll be sending out to you a poll, basically, for some dates right around the middle of October to try and establish a special meeting just for the public hearings necessary for this project. But to lead up to that, some of our ideas for you are, on the 1st of October, of August, I'm sorry, we're planning, that week, we're planning meetings with the technical advisory committee, the citizens advisory committee, and the steering committee to go over the first full draft. We could offer you that same presentation that those three boards get at your August 1st meeting. That would be something that we could offer you. And we would also consider outside in the lobby on that August 1st meeting, a, some sort of a public engagement. We might not be fully prepared at that point, and we might want to wait on that August 1st, and so here you'll also see the potential for a special meeting for you in August, if you would like to do that, or a special meeting in September. That would be at your request if you felt you wanted to have a special meeting in here in chambers with a presentation on where we are and people's ability to come and talk about it. Otherwise, unless you request that, we're not sure that we need those special meetings, but we wanted to put that on table, make sure we're, you know, we're willing to do it if you, if you ask us for that. We've also got on here something that we call Planning Commission Hosted or Sponsored Open House. We're not quite sure what we quite mean by sponsored. It doesn't necessarily have to be that you are having an advertised meeting in your, and we're in here in chambers. When we say sponsored, what it means to us is that you can come and witness it, so you can, you know about it, you can mingle with people. We would do a notice of potential quorum so to cover ourselves on that, and then when we had an open house meeting, you could, you could be there to engage with people, you could be there to hear their questions and hear our answers. That's really what we mean when we say sponsored. We wouldn't really be expecting you to do anything more than that. We are looking at maybe even doing some meetings before the Board of Adjustment out here in the lobby. Now, that is a daytime meeting, so we're not sure really how many people we would capture, but when those agendas are full, we'd at least capture all those people who are coming in for that, that business, because those can be pretty full agendas, and we could advertise it, and people who are able to do something during the day. But then for your, your meeting in September, whether or not we give you a full-blown presentation or what we do actually at the meeting, out in the lobby, we would like to do something prior to that meeting. We are calling them, I think we're calling them, we keep going back and forth on open houses, I mean, we can call them workshops, open houses, they're really more of an opportunity to just learn how to engage with the new draft, how to go on that software platform, ask us questions, we can demonstrate how to get in and help people with specific questions. So it's not really a workshop, it is more of an open house and presentation of what the draft would look like. Then we thought that you might just have some ideas. We don't know what, what kind of things you'd like to do. We think that if we give you full-blown presentations throughout the summer, particularly in August and at your first meeting in Sep, in, or in September and October, those would be pretty robust. The meetings that we would do outside in the lobby prior to those would be pretty big and associated with you. So we really just want to make sure that when the middle of October rolls around, you feel like you've had every opportunity, you wanted to participate as a planning commission. All right, so we'll have a very big public engagement calendar that we'll be rolling out with the communications team at the manager's office very soon, that, that won't necessarily have the planning commission name tagged to it. So there will be a lot more other than just what we're proposing to you, but we want to make sure that, that you're comfortable with what, what you are doing. So that's what we have for you tonight. Anything that you'd like to throw out, say you like the idea, you don't like the idea, something new, and then tonight we can get that settled and get it all on the calendar and start noticing and advertising around those ideas. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioners, any input for Eric at this time?
Go ahead. Did you have some? Thank you, Eric. I'd like to see a lot of public engagement, so I'm all for the August and September, the August meeting and then September open house workshop, however you want to call it, whatever it takes to get it out there so the public can be aware of what's going on and that we can check it out also.
I like the idea, I would really like a really good recap of the draft when the steering committee, the advisory committee, and the technical advisory committee meet. I think we should all really know what comes out of that if there's any changes also.
Well, on the August, that week of August 1st is the week that we're scheduling those meetings to go over those things. We could give you the same presentation, and you could provide feedback as well, just like they're going to, and then all of that feedback is going to be rolled into the draft that comes out for the public, right? That would be your opportunity to kind of get in before, before we let it out to the public. So we could do that August 1st and then come back to you in September with just what that draft is and be willing to talk about, you know, that draft both before and during the meeting.
That sounds good.
Does that make sense?
Commissioners?
It does. In the September, can we also have the open house or workshop also?
Yes.
Is that possible?
Yes.
All right.
I thoroughly agree with my commissioner here in that the more public engagement that we can do, the better, because I think that's where some of our concerns are, is no matter how much we put it out there, if they're not catching it, we're not really getting the full honest answers or input.
And we're always going to get people, they're going to say, well, I didn't know about it, but at least we're, we're sitting here right now trying, or trying.
Yes, so I want to commend both you and Kat for all the work that you're putting into this and your plans for the public engagement in the future. Yes, Commissioner Felton?
Pat Phillips, I have a question. Since you, this is before, we will be informed before the public. Should we meet either before or after the commission meeting?
Madam Chair, Michael Large for the record over the DA's office. You're going to need to have it in an open meeting. You're still, any time the board gets together, you're going to have to be in an open meeting. So while the presentation can be made to this before, before they have the meetings with the general public, the general public is still invited to these meetings, they're going to be able to hear all of this multiple times, but I do think it's a good... But I do think it's a good idea to have as many times that they're going to hear this information to make sure that we have more ears, as Mr. Pierce said, to hear and have public engagement on it.
Thank you, Mr. Large.
Yep.
Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Flick?
Yes, August 1, I have eye surgery.
Okay, well. You can make some of the other meetings possibly, then. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
And I'm going to go over what I just heard, if that's okay, Chair?
That's fine.
Please do. What I heard is that instead of just a memo at the next meetings leading up, you'd like a full, a full discussion, a full agenda item. The subject matter, of course, will change as the plan progresses. But you will get a full agenda item at your next summer meetings. We will hold, prior to your meeting in September and August, or October, we'll hold workshops out in the lobby. And we will hold a workshop with the Board of Adjustment at least once throughout the summer, before their meeting, at least once throughout the summer. And then we will be polling you for your preferred dates for a first public hearing in the middle of October.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Kat, for all the work you're putting in for the, for the, for the community.
Madam Chairman, because this is labeled as an action item, I would recommend opening it for public comment at this point.
Okay, is there any public comment either in chambers or via Zoom at this time?
I have no public comment in chambers. I have no public comment on Zoom.
Thank you. Hearing no public comment. We will close that and move on to item 10, Chair and Commission items. Item 10A, if you would read that, please, Mr. Pelham.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Item 10A, nomination and approval of Washoe County Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair from among Planning Commission's membership to serve a term of one year or until a successor is approved. This is for possible action.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I just want to thank Chair Doncic. I think she's done a fantastic job for these last two years. And if our bylaws didn't forbid it, I would be happy to re-nominate you to another year. Thank you to my fellow commissioners. And I would nominate Rob Pierce to be the Chair of the Commission.
Well, thank you. This is Rob. I would nominate Daniel.
Do we have to do them separately?
Oh, do we have to do them separately?
We got to vote on you first.
All right, yes.
And I will make the second to appoint Rob Pierce as Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard. Chair Pierce?
Yes, I would like to nominate Daniel, and I know I'm going to mess it up, Lazarewski, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Can I second my own nomination?
No. Commissioner Flick, second.
Oh, thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Item 10B, future agenda items. Do commissioners have any agenda? Items for, they'd like on the agenda for the future at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to 10C, requests for information from staff. Are there any requests at this time from the commissioners for staff? Hearing none?
No requests, but I do want to say publicly thank you, Roger, for all your time and dedication to the cause.
Beat me to it.
Yep. It's been an honor serving with you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that very deeply.
And if we're going to continue on with that, I want to say, Roger, thank you for all your years of service to not just working as a staff member, but what you've done for this community. So thank you and wish you well on to your most enjoyable next endeavor, retirement. Next, item 11, Directors and Legal Counsel items. Roger, do you have anything to report on previous commission items?
I have nothing on previous Planning Commission items, but I would like to take one moment and if I can introduce our newest planner, Tim Evans. If you'd care to stand up for just a moment. He has joined us as of Monday, and he will be.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. And he is a welcome addition. He really is. He comes to us with several years of extensive planning experience and is going to come up to speed very, very quickly, I am certain. The other item that I was going to say is that I bid you all a very, very fond farewell. I have done this for a long time. I certainly am looking forward to my retirement with great anticipation, and I, I will not pretend otherwise. However, there have been significant times in front of this board. And if I didn't believe that we truly made our community better, I don't know that I could have done this job. I truly believe that there is value in what we in staff and what you on the commission have done these last, you know, over 20 years in my case. So I very fondly bid you farewell.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Rog.
Next is item 11B, legal information updates.
Nothing illegal.
Thank you, Mr. Large. Then last on the agenda formally is public comment. Item 12, is there either public comment via Zoom or in chambers at this time?
I have no public comment in chambers, no public comment on Zoom.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, then we have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.